Okay, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, April 23rd, 2020, 5 o'clock PM, edition of the Auburn zoning Board of Appeals. So before I get started this evening, I just have to go through, I have quite a script to read, and also I have a couple of penance, so make sure that we are communicating properly. So I'm just gonna start from my left to right, so Building Commissioner Moody, can you hear me and see me well?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a Steven O'Connell, whose stuff is off right now. A Phil C., oh, Steven, I was wrong. Hi, Steven, can you hear and see me, over here? Okay, so I get an affirmative from him. Phil C., can you hear and see me? Thank you, okay. Amanda Gage, I don't have it signed on yet. Town Hall President Tinkin', there's also blank. Mr. Cuffey, can you hear me?
I, this is Amanda, I can hear you, I'm just the IT person on for the town.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Jones, can you hear and see me? Okay. Mr. Herron, can you hear and see me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Uh, I think that's Mike Maron right there, maybe, just have an M no picture.
Sure. I can hear you, Bob.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Roach, how are you? Can you see me today?
I can see you, I'm here.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I don't know if the gentleman is with a dockboard in the background, uh, if you wanna introduce yourself, then you can just verify that you can hear and see me.
I'm Clay Williams with Eastland Partners.
Thank you. Okay, so then I have, um, I'm trying to, I can scroll here, or, oh, I knew that was gonna happen. Okay, um, CPC, I'm not really sure who that might, um...
That's just the presentation computer for Clay Williams.
All right, let me just make, Mr. Chacolo?
I can hear you on a clear.
Thank you, um, I'm gonna thank you, I have, um, LC and CO.
CO is caller four, so caller four can just identify themselves.
Hello, caller four.
Uh, how do you know who's your caller four and not?
I just wanna make sure that you can hear and see all of us at the meeting before we begin.
Um, I am, I am phone, uh, phone only, so I don't see anybody, but I can hear everybody.
Okay, that's fine with me. LC, caller three perhaps, maybe that is?
That's Larry Chacolo, I think we're good to go, Bob.
Okay, so what I can see in my screens, and we are all present at the conference room, adequately connected, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, if you could please bear with me, a few minutes, I have quite a script to read. Um, so I confirm the member access. As a preliminary matter, my name is Robert Tejero, I'm the Chair of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. Permit me to confirm that all members of persons that are participating are present, which we just did. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. So Michael Maron, present?
Yeah, I'm here, Bob.
Larry Chacolo, present?
Present.
Richard Pucci, present?
I'm here.
Megan Roach, present?
Present.
Okay, um, Peter Jones, present? And Caitlin Bush, present?
I don't believe Caitlin will be with us tonight.
Okay, good to know, thank you. So I have to read, uh, town officials and employees to this meeting, when I call your name, also please respond to the affirmative. Uh, Building Commissioner Caleb Moody?
Present.
Tom Carter, Adam Minard?
Yeah.
Um, Director Dallin Coyle?
Here.
Oh, wonderful, thank you, guys, I appreciate you joining us this evening. Um, is there anybody that I missed, that might wanna chime in with their name and identify themselves?
Uh, my name's Daniel Campbell, I'm on the phone.
Yeah, okay, that's just for, uh, this is just for the town administrative people.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, not a problem. Okay, so, um, the introduction to the remote meeting, so good evening, everyone, this open meeting of the Town of Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals, Thursday, April 23rd, 2020, now called the Order at 5 o'clock PM. Do you wanna have a motion to open the meeting?
Make a motion to open?
Do I have a second?
Second.
And we have to do roll call votes this evening, so, um, I'm not really sure of the names that just called up, but Michael Maron?
Right.
Uh, I just need, I just need an affirmative to open the meeting.
Affirmative.
Everything is gonna be literally roll call vote this evening, just so you know? Mrs. Smallham?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Cuffey?
Open.
Uh, Megan Roach?
Open.
And Mrs. Jones?
Hi.
Open, yeah, I saw that, thank you, okay. So, take care of that, so this meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Bates' executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, we operate on the COVID-19 pandemic. Yeah, uh, in order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, I'm sorry, give a little background noise, is somebody, uh...
That's why we broke up now.
Okay, um, in order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised by the, and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, as such, the Governor's orders suspend the requirement of the open meeting law, to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to be encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda of materials meeting, is on the town website, and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that public, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals is convening by remote participation for the public only, although some staff may have physically located for the selectings meeting in the town hall, those employees are practicing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's orders. For the public to join in this meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-646-749-3112, and enter access code 944-571-349. Again, that telephone number is 1-646-749-3112, enter access code 944-571-349. While the public can join via computer at GoToMeeting.com, join 944-571-349. The remote access information is posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by online cable television. Accordingly, those members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, employees and members of the public at this stage, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care of, not the screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided by the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning into the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business, and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the Chair of the Board, Robert Tejero, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they include their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of the members, inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly, and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Uh, so for any reason, my last page, please bear with me, and I appreciate your patience. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you, and then state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself prior. After members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who are going to speak, to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commenters, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes before any comments. In the event we do have any public comments from butters, I'll use my phone as a timer, just so you're aware, I will set it in front of the screen, and that will be the three-minute mark. Um, so finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote, as I just mentioned, and if we have any technical difficulties, which I do not anticipate, uh, if technical difficulties arise, the Chair suspends the meeting while attempts to resolve are made, and keeps accurate minutes, knowing any disconnections and reconnections of members. Okay, so that's my three-page, uh, script that I was required to read. So, the first meeting on the agenda this evening, I was informed before the meeting began, that Mr. Chacolo will have to recuse himself for this meeting, so as a result, we will be moving Mr. Jones forward as a foregoing member, is everyone clear on that? I mean, just give me a head shake for that, that's okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Larry, um, I just wanna be sure that you don't need that verbally spoken to everybody.
Yeah, so, now I'm gonna go through, and see the people that are not on the screen, and make sure that, it's really just for the townsfolk on this, this isn't for the participating, um, applicants, this is really for the board members and for the town folk. So Caleb, you're all set, you understand everything, right?
Yeah, that's fine, for the record, we have Larry Chacolo recusing himself for the first hearing, you can begin.
Okay, perfect, there we go, that saves some time. So the 5 o'clock PM applicant, Bay State Performance Owner Tim, uh, if I say his wrong, I apologize, Tim LaVale, and Scott Flavin, requesting a special permit to extend the existing non-conforming use under Section 8.2.3 and 3.2.7.6 of the Auburn zoning bylaws, bylaws, excuse me, as well as special permits under Section 3.2.6.111, or 11, to permit multiple business use, and Section 3.2.6.3, to permit light vehicular sales on a property located at 94 South Old Road, AutoMap, MAP 13, parcel 88. Okay, is the applicant present?
Uh, Tim LaVale is here, yes.
Okay, uh, Tim LaVale, um, if you could introduce yourself, um, state your name for the record, and go over what your intentions are with your, um, request before the Board today.
Uh, my name's Tim LaVale, I'm co-owner with Scott Flavin of our Bay State Speed Shop on 94 South Old Road, um, and we are requesting, um, basically a renewal of the existing permit that we were granted last year.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Um, as far as intentions, um, you pretty much summed it up, we do light vehic, uh, light sales, um, it's mostly, um, small automotive stuff, mostly maintenance, it's more of, you know, motorcycle projects and, um, off-road vehicles type of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know what else you need from me.
Um, that's really it, so I'd like to actually, um, just remind the members that this is the garage that's down off of, uh, on South Old Road, sort of like behind Curtis Street, uh, we had these gentlemen before the Board actually a year ago, um, the agreement was that we would ensure that they were complying with all the regulations and rules, and all the, um, special indicators set forth by the Board last time, uh, and make sure that everything was going well with the butters, and then we continue from there. So, really, this is just the annual review of this particular, um, set of permits, to make sure everything is still going well at that site. So with that being said, I will open it up for questions from the Board, Mr. Cuffey, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Um, just that, have we had any complaints in the past year about the business?
Um, Caleb, have you heard any issues with any complaints from, uh, neighbors or butters from the business?
No, I'm not aware of any problems with any butters.
Okay. Mr. Cuffey, did you hear that?
I did.
Okay, does that satisfy your requirement, or would you like other questions?
That's good, I'm, I'm all set, thank you.
All right, um, Ms. Roach? Uh, you're, but your phone is muted. That's okay.
I'm good, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Jones? Actually, Mr. Jones was not here, I believe, were you here on the Board for this last year?
Uh, yes, I do remember this one.
Oh, good.
Um, I, I wanted, if you look at this decision, you'll see that I didn't wind up signing, but I should've signed it, uh, cause I was part of the decision. Um, so I just have one question, um, and that is for the applicant, um, do you believe that you're minded by the conditions?
Uh, I do, yes, and I believe that, um, the owners of the, the building, Gail Usher and Ed Usher, who also own the other business, Usher Ford and Auto, they really, and, uh, you know, they stepped up on their part, cleaning up the property, putting up a fence, um, and, you know, really trying to keep the peace, keep everybody happy, and take care of conditions.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Great, okay, um, so I got Mr. Maron, Mr. Chacolo, that is a, uh, recused, Ms. Roach, Ms. Jones, um, okay, so I believe you have...
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, it's, um, Michael Maron.
Yes, sir.
I, I didn't actually, um, I didn't actually keep on this one, I do have one quick question, but before, just as a matter of a point of order, just to con, to confirm, we haven't opened this hearing, so in this format, are we gonna be required to vote and open a hearing and close the usual process, or are we foregoing that?
Well, um, well, after I read everything, Caleb said, "Go ahead," so I probably just omitted that mentally myself, but, so just for the record, um, can I have a motion to open the, the hearing?
Motion to open, no, second.
Oh, second.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Mr. Jones? Yeah, okay, okay, so I'm receiving a notification that Steven Vincent has arrived at the meeting. Um, he's calling in, Steven Vincent, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, good afternoon.
Thank you so much. We're in the middle of the first hearing, so be patient for a few minutes, um, we'll get a reminder, okay, great, thank you. All right, um, so it doesn't appear as though we've had any issues with this site, uh, it appears as though that the requirements of this initial permits have been met, um, it does not appear as though the owners of the property have chosen to call in to express any issues, so as far as I'm concerned, I don't see anything else to, uh, submit to the Board, so...
Through the Chair, if I may, Bob, you may just want, you may just wanna open it up to a but, see if there's any butters present. There are a couple unidentified callers, so just ask if there's any butters that would like to speak.
Good call. Hi, I, um, so just based on what I see here on the screen, do we have any butters that wanna speak on the 5 o'clock PM, um, hearing? If so, could you please identify yourself?
Looks like we're clear.
Yeah, okay, I think we've given adequate time to respond, so we do not have any butters present, um, so do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion to close the public portion.
Oh, second.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Sports.
Yeah, okay, I already have one from Ms. Roach, Mr. Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Cuffey?
I'm ready, yeah.
Okay, and I, I also confirm that, so the public portion of the hearing is closed. So do I have a motion for the 5 o'clock PM application of Bay State Performance to continue operating under the current circumstances, uh, and I think we can also probably omit any future, um, permit reviews unless anybody has any issues with that, otherwise, because we're not treating them any different than any other business, um, that operates in this facility in town.
I'm off, I have the script.
Okay, I'm sorry, one second. Um, I'm looking, I see Ms. Roach has an active microphone?
I have a motion to approve the requested special permit, and to extend the existing non-conforming use under Section 8.2.3 and 3.2.7.6 of the Auburn zoning bylaws.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Uh, Pete Jones.
Okay, so we have a second from Mr. Jones, and we have, uh, an affirmative brought forward from Ms. Roach, uh, Mr. Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Uh, Mr. Cuffey, how do you vote?
I'll approve.
And as a Chairman, I approve as well, so we have Tejero, Cuffey, Roach, Maron, and Jones, did I miss anyone?
All clear.
Okay, great, so the 5 o'clock PM hearing has been completed, and the affirmative, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so the one thing I'd like to ask, just to make it easy, because we have some members that have camera access, and some that are not choosing to use it, so if, when you say, uh, you know, I have, I make a motion, it would, should be like, uh, "Bob Tejero, I make a motion," or "Make a motion from Mr. Tejero," uh, just to identify yourself at the same time, so it's a little bit easier for the record, and for the, uh, getting in the minutes. Okay, so 5 o'clock PM applicant, Bay State Performance, congratulations, good luck, hope it goes well, uh, we'll give them a minute, I think, I'm not really sure how they disconnected or whatnot, so we'll give one, a few minutes in between. And while we're letting them disconnect, I'm gonna talk about the next series of permits. So we have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, uh, separate applications, starting at 5:10 to 5:11, 12, 13, and then finally 15, and they are from Eastland Partners Incorporated, requesting a special permit under section 3.2.2.1, for a two-family home at property located at 23 and 25 Albert Street, MAP 65, Russell 42, 27 and 29 Albert Street, MAP 65, parcel 52, 28 and 30 Albert Street, MAP 65, parcel 70, 31 and 33 Albert Street, MAP 65, parcel 68. Uh, it goes to the one, uh, excuse me, the 5:15 is not correct, I followed by a spot correct, so, we have one, two, three, four, from Eastland Partners, and I see, so it's the similar map and parcels, those are all correct, uh, and they are going from the section 3.2.2.1, for a two-family homes, located on Albert Street, and there is a total of one, two, three, four duplexes. Okay, so do I have a motion to open the 5:10 hearing? Whoa, could I have a motion to open the 5:10 hearing?
Mark Maron, I'm excited, no? No. Motion to open.
Okay, do I have a, uh, Mr. Jones, uh, do I have a second?
Yeah, this is Rich Cuffey, a second.
Okay, all in favor, Tejero, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to call, aye.
Okay, she did, I did hear that, we have Mr. Chacolo, Ms. Roach, and, um, Mr. Cuffey, okay. So is the applicant for representing Eastland Partners present?
Yes, I'm right here, Bob.
Okay, can you, Robert, can you, uh, give your name, uh, and kind of, was it overview of what you would like to, uh, get accomplished over there?
Sorry. Sure, um, so, uh, through this chair, uh, my name is Clay Williams, uh, I work in planning and sustainability for Eastland Partners, and, uh, we are here for you tonight to apply for a special permit to construct a series of two-family homes off of the, um, addresses you listed on, uh, Albert Street. Um, like you said, these four homes are essentially the exact same thing, just on different parcels. Um, these two families are, uh, single-floor living duplexes, um, they're all two-bedroom units each, uh, with a two-car garage. We term this housing, uh, empty nester housing, to kind of target a, um, you know, older family looking to downsize. Uh, these, each of these parcels, um, meet all of the dimensional requirements listed in Section 3.2.2.1, um, in terms of frontages, and setbacks, and lot areas, um, all of our utilities have already been committed from the Auburn Water District and the Auburn Sewer Department. Uh, the, the main difference here is that the first one on 23 and 25 Albert Street will front on Blaker Street, and then the remaining three duplexes will front on, uh, Albert Street Extension once that's completed. Um, so yeah, that's, that's the main kind of thing we're going after tonight, um, we've built, uh, a number of these, uh, different communities, if, you can see my screen share right now, correct?
Yes.
So these are pictures from a community called Rogerson Crossing in Uxbridge, and the, uh, home type we're proposing here off of Albert Street is, uh, the exact same thing. So it'll look like this, um, from the exterior and the interior, uh, for each one of those four, uh, duplex homes.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Now they're talking about Albert Street.
What do you think CJ, any to add?
I don't know, try to...
Yeah, so I guess, um, you know, I think that's kind of our main, uh, proposal, and I guess I'd open it up to, uh, the Board for...
Which side do you count?
Okay, so, um, we're gonna go right down, um, as we usually do, I'll start with the Vice Chair, Mr. Maron, do you, uh, before we begin, do we have any butters present for this project? I know a lot of the members like they have no butters first, so do we have anything for the 5:10, 11, 12, or 13, any butters present that would like to speak? All right, so I'm gonna say that we have no butters present, I'm gonna go ahead and move to the members of the Board. Um, Vice Chair Maron, do you have any questions to the applicant?
That's a, Mr. Chairman, um, I did not have, for this, uh, an opportunity to view these lots, what currently sits on these lots, no?
I'm sorry, that wasn't very clear, could you repeat that for me, please?
Uh, is that gonna adjust my...
Turn me.
But I, I repeat the question, and hopefully this is a little bit clear, I adjusted my settings here, I, I did not have an opportunity to view these lots, what currently sits on these lots, no?
So Mr. Maron is asking the applicant, what is currently sitting on these lots? Are there any buildings currently there, are there any...
Currently vacant, they... So, uh, these lots are currently vacant, they are part of an, uh, approved definitive subdivision that is, uh, currently existing.
Right, so when I drove over there today, um, I noticed, obviously, as you pull up to the end of the street, there's that large opening, which I believe would be our 40B gateway, is that correct, Caleb?
So what exists on, is a five-lot subdivision, I believe...
I just wanted to listen.
I believe four of the lots, four of the lots will have these duplexes, and one of them will have the entrance to the 40B project. Clay can talk more about that, though.
Right, right, okay, so, but this, so is this, this is technically not part of the 40B project, it's an, it's an adjunct, separate project, but it's gonna be a part of the project, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure the members of the Board are all understanding of that, so this is going to be right where the entrance of the 40B is, if you drive down that street, so if you're going down, for folks that are kind of listening in, uh, again, from Auburn towards Oxford, and you take the, right at the BP station on Route 20, Auburn Family Dental is right there, we're going down that side road, and then at the end of that road, when you look directly across, there is a, quite a bit of ledge being taken out, and a lot of, um, road being opened up, it's close, and scarce an amount of earth being moved right there, so we're looking at right at that general area where these four lots are gonna be. Okay, so is that, I'm hoping that clears things up, so, again, going back to Mr. Maron, do you have anything else for the applicant?
To answer, stay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no, I, I appreciate the response, cause I'm good.
Okay, um, Mr. Chacolo, you are back in business for the, um, Eastcullar hearings, do you have any questions to the applicant?
Yes, no, I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Megan Roach?
I have so much. No, I do not have any questions to the applicant.
Okay.
Just, um, for question, yeah, they're, they're part of the same subdivision, but that fifth lot, the 40B, will be submitting that package to you, uh, by the end of next week, and will be adjourned at the hour.
Sure, I, okay, I, I understand, we have, we have, yeah. Okay, I'm getting, to be fair, I'm...
Subdivision, but that's not a, uh, I understand, I understand, but that's not a...
Muted. I'm muted.
I have some, something's going on, a lot of the, um, calls...
Through the Chair, can I just take, can I take the mic for a minute?
Albert Street is not, Albert Street is down us...
Excuse me, ma'am?
Good.
Ma'am? Some, someone's calling in on their phone and speaking over the meeting, they need to mute their phone if they're gonna talk.
Can you identify her?
I ca, I can't, she's, she's calling in on her phone, caller six, maybe you wanna see if there's any Butters that wanna speak about the Albert Street project.
Right, is there any, so while we're trying to, this, um, background noise, is there anybody that's interested in speaking about the Albert Street projects?
I don't understand.
If you can identify yourself, uh, let us know if you want to speak, please. All right, I don't, I have not heard any, a Butters interested in speaking, oh, six I think is left. Okay? Um... All right, I think we have some quiet for a minute, I'll just move forward. So, uh, just for the record, Mr. Maron, do you have any further questions to the applicant?
No, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Maron, I'm good.
Okay, I'm just making sure, because I wanna go to the top, to the bottom again, because we had a lot of interference there. Mr. Chacolo?
I am good.
Mr. Cuffey?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Roach?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Uh, just one question, um, what's the height of the building?
Uh, uh, these buildings are approximately twenty-five feet, eight, you know, in, in line, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Uh, can, can you say that again, Mr. Chairman, you have?
So through the chair, uh, I'm curious, what was the overall height, the, the highest point of the building that you are proposing to construct?
Uh, the, the highest point would be approximately twenty-five feet, so it would be, you know, consistent with the scale of the existing homes in the neighborhood.
Okay, Mr. Jones, just a year?
Yeah, it's a single-floor living, so, you know, there's no upstairs, it's just, just one floor.
Yeah, and as you know, the picture that they're showing right there is cathedral ceiling, so as you can see, it's one-story. So, Mr. Jones, did you copy that, it was twenty-five feet?
I did, and I have no, no other questions.
Okay, so I'm, just for the record, I have no questions. Um, so we did run through, uh, all the members present, um...
Through the chair, you may wanna open it up to a Butters one last time before you make, make a motion.
Okay, so, uh, we did have a, a change in the number of, uh, callers, so I'll ask one more time if we have, uh, any Butters for the Albert Street projects that would like to comment. I'm hearing somebody speak, and they're breaking up, so we gotta give it a minute. There doesn't appear to be any, um, technical difficulties on your end, correct, so if I move forward, we seem to be okay?
Yes, I don't see anyone.
Okay, so then again, with the second and last call for the applicants, uh, the Butters, uh, for the applicant, we don't have any of those, so I'm gonna make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, the motion to close came from Mr. Chacolo, do I have a second?
I make a real second.
I have a second from Ms. Roach. Um, Mr. Cuffey, how do you vote?
Agreed.
Okay, um, the vice chair Maron, how do you vote?
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the point of what I think we voted to close the hearing?
Yeah, correct, I apologize, you're right.
You know, I think we need to actually state the motion before we vote on the motion.
Right, so this is a motion to close the public portion of the hearing, and then we'll do motion to grant individually, as I read them off afterwards, if that is the decision of the board. All right, so Mr. Cuffey, are you voting to agree to close the public portion of the hearing?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Mr. Maron?
Yes, uh, a motion to close, I approve.
Okay, Mr. Chacolo?
I, I made a motion.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I have to go through the, 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 yes. Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, public portion of the hearing is closed. Do I have a motion on the five-ten application for Eastland Partners Incorporated requesting a special permit under section three point two, point two, point one, for a two-family home at property located at twenty-three and twenty-five Albert Street, Auburn, map, map sixty-five parcel forty-two? Do I have a motion for that particular piece of properties?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll, I'll make a motion to grant as stated with standard conditions.
Okay, I have a second for Mr. Chacolo, Mr. Cuffey?
I'm grant.
Ms. Roach?
Grant.
Mr. Jones?
Grant. Um, point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It'll be, because I have not refused myself from this hearing, it should be only five votes.
Oh, I, I do apologize, you are correct, Mr. Jones, because Mr. Chacolo has voted so. It's, I understand, and, but point of order, Mr. Chacolo is a voting, voting member of these four hearings. I keep getting somebody in the background again, I'm, I'm hoping somebody isn't having Mr. Maron, is your microphone open?
I quoted, but it is open now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure if I, the people that I know that are in the room, if their microphones are closed, if they're not involved in the hearing, it might help closing this up. Okay, so what I'm gonna do is read off the next one. So the five-eleven, same Eastland Partners for three point two, point two, point one, at property located at twenty-seven and twenty-nine Albert Street, map sixty-five parcel fifty-two. Do I have a motion to approve the five-eleven applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to close as stated, the four hearings described.
Do I have a second, Mr. Cuffey?
Yes, close.
Ms. Roach?
Yes, close.
And I vote to close, Mr. Petro. Congratulations, good luck, hope it goes well.
Through the chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm listening.
So we lost the audio on, on the feed, what I'm gonna do is read each one, we'll need to do the motion and the vote again for each hearing, but I'll do the reading for you to speed things up.
Okay, it's your turn.
So I need a motion on the five-ten applicant, Eastland Partners Incorporated requesting a special permit under section three-two-two-one for a two-family home at property located at twenty-three and twenty-five Albert Street, Auburn, Mass., map sixty-five parcel six, parcel forty-two, I need a motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to grant as stated, uh, with standard conditions.
So a motion's, motion's been made by Michael Maron, second by Larry Chacillo. Megan Roach?
Hold on, please, uh...
If everyone could just, if everyone could just not speak until, I'll call on you for a vote, so I have a motion by Michael Maron, a second by Larry Chacillo, Megan Roach, could I have your vote? Richard Cussie?
Approve.
Robert Petro?
Approve.
Okay, that passes. The five-eleven applicant, Eastland Partners Inc., requesting a special permit under section three-two-two-one for a two-family home at property located at twenty-seven and twenty-nine Albert Street, Auburn, Mass., map sixty-five parcel fifty-two, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to approve as stated with standard conditions.
Motion's been made by Michael Maron, I need a second.
Second.
Second's been made by Larry Chacillo. Robert Petro, your vote?
Approved.
Richard Cussie?
Approve.
Megan Roach?
Approved.
Okay, that passes, I need a motion for the five-ten, five-twelve applicant, Eastland Partners Inc., requesting a special permit under section three-two-two-one for a two-family home at property located at twenty-one and thirty Albert Street, Auburn, Mass., map sixty-five parcel seventy.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to approve as stated with standard conditions.
Michael Maron's made a motion, Larry Chacillo is seconded, Robert Petro?
Approved.
Richard Cussie?
Approved.
Megan Roach?
Approved.
Okay, one more, the five-thirteen applicant, Eastland Partners Inc., requesting a special permit under section three-two-two-one for a two-family home at property located at thirty-one and thirty-three Albert Street, Auburn, Mass., map sixty-five parcel sixty-eight. Take a motion?
Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to approve as stated with standard conditions.
Motion's been made by Michael Maron, second by Larry Chacillo, Robert Petro?
Approved.
Richard Cussie?
Approved.
Megan Roach?
Approved.
Okay, now we have the five-fifteen applicant, Daniel Campbell, requesting a special permit under section three-two-two-ten of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an accessory apartment on property located at seventy-five Prospect Street, Auburn, Mass., map sixty-seven parcel seven. Need a motion to open the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Motion's been made by Michael Maron, second by Larry Chacillo. Robert Petro?
Approved, open.
Richard Cussie?
Open.
Megan Roach?
Approved.
Okay, all yours, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate that. Um, so is Mr. Daniel Campbell, we have him present?
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Campbell, if you could just go over what you're introducing, give the board number and overview, and open it up for either a Butters' questions or board members' questions?
Uh, yep. Absolutely, so, uh, I have an existing, smaller detached garage now, uh, looking to take that down and build a larger one, and then put, uh, an accessory apartment above it for my mother and stepfather. Uh, they live in Florida, but they like to come visit us, and, uh, me and my wife are gonna start a family shortly, so be a little easier that way for them while they're here. Um, I plan on, is doing the sewer, tie the sewerings, my existing sewer, uh, water to my existing meter, same thing with the electric, no separate utilities or anything like that, um, and, uh, that's pretty much it.
Okay, uh, do we have any Butters present that would like to comment on this particular
Again, we're looking for any Butters on the seventy-five Prospect Street hearing.
All right, hearing, none, seeing none, um, we'll start, we'll start again, vice chair Maron, tell me, hold on, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Is that feedback from my mic, or is that something in the background talking?
It sounds like someone's talking.
Okay, well, we'll move forward, I hope he will stop. Um, so, again, I apologize, um, and vice chair Maron, do you have any questions to the, Dan Campbell, the applicant?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Down the diagram that's being shown on the screen here, the footprint is a forty by forty, uh, but if I understand this correctly, um, you're looking only for a living space of thirty by twenty-three?
Uh, yeah, so I know that there was, um, regulations that do, it's like seven hundred and two square feet, or seven hundred and twelve square feet, or something like that, for the, for the, uh, the required size, no larger than that, so, I mean, I, I didn't, I haven't drawn up any plans with a designer or anything yet, so I was just trying to rough sketch something to kinda give an idea of what I was looking to do, um, but obviously, whatever the apartment size is regulated at, then I can make that work with no issues. Um, yeah, so, I mean, if it, if it can only be a certain amount of square foot, then that's fine, like I said, it's not for them to be permanently here, just while they come up from Florida to visit in the summer or something, just to have kinda their own space away from me and my wife, and kinda keep a little distance.
Thank you, and then, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a follow-up question, uh, for Caleb, so, um, through the permitting process and through the inspection process, if, um, if this were to be constructed, then the permitting process, I would assume, would, uh, come from and validate the square footage that's being used for living space during the construction, correct?
That's correct, one of the standard conditions for a special, for the special permit for the accessory apartment is, is the square footage can't exceed seven hundred square feet, so that could be added to the decision.
Okay, thank you for that, I, I don't have anything further, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you so much, um, Mr. Chacolo, do you have any questions to the applicant?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, um, this, is this an attached garage, or, or do you fall into the category of a two-family on the same lot?
Uh, yeah, so I know that that was a concern originally, so I, I mean, I was told to just make sure that it doesn't look like a, a second house, I know that that was a concern, people putting like another house or so on the lot. Um, I'm gonna try to keep it to look as much like a garage as possible, um, there'll be like no main entry doors, the, the staircase to get to the apartment above will be inside the existing garage, or inside the garage itself, so no, like, main entry on the side or the front or anything like that, just a couple of garage doors in the front, um, two or three, and then just a few windows up above to give them some lighting.
Uh, will it be attached, or will it be a separate building?
Uh, it would be a separate building. I currently have a separate, smaller garage now, which I was looking to take down and kinda put in place of this one, um, and actually tuck it even a little further back, uh, into the woods, per se.
Absolutely, no need of accessing this garage from the current house?
Uh, correct. I'm hoping to use it as well as like, kinda like a shop for myself, like, to tinker with, with things, I have like an older car that I like to do things on, and, uh, motorcycle, things like that, so.
I think that is for ruling and an opinion from, um, Caleb, as to if this does indeed fall into the category of a two fam, two-family lot.
So through the chair, one of the conditions of the accessory apartment is, is supposed to be attached to the single-family home. The other issue with this design is you cannot, one of the entrances from the dwelling would need to go directly outside, it could not go through the garage, only the second exit would be allowed to go through the garage, so there would need to be a door to the apartment from the outside of the building.
I believe in looking at, at the, at that particular, uh, requirement would get satisfied, I'm just more concerned as to how we categorize this, whether it's a, uh, a separate, uh, a separate residence on the same lot.
Yeah, by our bylaws, the, the accessory apartment would need to be attached to the single-family home, um, second dwellings are not permitted on the same lot.
Yeah, I mean, I was hoping with using this, you know, making sure that I use the same utilities, as far as like, the same electric metering, same water metering, things like that, would, you know, basically, I have no intentions ever to be renting this out or any sorts like that, um, and trying to have separate utilities or anything, um, so, you know, make sure I, obviously make sure I keep everything coming off my existing house, you know, tapping to my existing water, my existing electric, existing sewer, things like that.
Uh, second question for Caleb, if there was a small, short, blazeway between the current residence and this new building that the applicant wants to, uh, build, wouldn't that satisfy our bylaw?
If it was connected at some point, yes.
Does that sound feasible, Mr. Campbell?
Uh, unfortunately not, um, the, the way my house is, the front of the house is to the road, and the garage is, you know, facing my, my existing garage, facing my neighbor, the one that's attached to my house, and then there's like a deck, kind of... the one that's attached to my house, and then there's like a deck kind of around the corner of the house from there, and then where the garage I want to put in is almost probably 40 or so feet, if not a little bit better than that, like more into the woods towards the back of my house. Kind of like, yeah, I have, uh, my property's about 300 feet deep and the house sits about on the middle of it, so, you know, I'm trying to tuck it back there as well so that it, you know, it doesn't look as, as big either from the road and things, you know, I don't want to make it look kind of all gaudy or whatever, so, um, I'm hoping to kind of tuck it into the woods a little bit better.
So, the fact that you're gonna take down the existing garage, is that what I heard you say?
Yes. Yeah, the, I have an existing detached gar- I have an, uh, existing attached garage on the house and then a small, like a 14 by 14, uh, existing detached garage. It looked like it was kind of homemade before I purchased the house, so kind of leaning a little, um, I'm gonna remove that and basically put the new garage even further back than where that sits now.
So, you and, and this, I'd like Caleb to please comment on it. There would have to be a couple of different, uh, things that he would need relief on to grant this special permit?
That would be correct. The bylaw does not allow second residents on one lot, so that would be a variance application.
And this qualifies as a second residence?
If it's not attached to the, the home, it doesn't qualify as an accessory apartment.
Um, I guess I would, I would say to the applicant, uh, Mr. Campbell, if you, if you can think of a way, um, you may want to withdraw, come up with another plan to, um, satisfy what you want and then come back and resubmit your application.
Yeah, I, I've tried to come up with multiple ideas, uh, with a few, I'm a electrician, so I have a few contractors that I work for that were trying to help me out and kind of think of, you know, things that they have done in the past or, or projects they had worked on to try to help me, and I don't have too much, too many ideas because of how far I want to put this gar- garage, you know, towards the back corner of my property. So, I don't, I don't have much idea as far as how to make it connect. Excuse me. Or, um, or anything like that.
I have no further questions, Mr. Caleb, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Cussie?
Uh, I have nothing right now.
Thank you. Ms. Roach?
I'm good for now.
All right, so my only comment on this is that, um, and I'm speaking to the applicant here, um, Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
I'm just getting that person speaking in the background again. It might be just me. So, anyway, um, as you had heard, the discussion is that we can't grant an accessory use apartment under the tax, look at that. Um, you'd have to come up with a way to attach the property. Now, you said you have a one's now attached to your property right now?
Uh, yes, I have a, a garage attached to my house right now, yes.
So, and let me just, and I'm just asking, this is certainly not a way that we are trying to correct this today, but if you were to submit an application package that would include converting your current attached garage into an in-law space and then adding the garage in the back of the property separately, I think you'd probably accomplish your goals as far as the zoning board is concerned. Currently, we can't, specifically we can't give you a permit, the zoning bylaws don't approve, or even state that you can have a separate attached accessory use apartment. An accessory use apartment has to be attached to the primary block. So, that would be the only way you could pull that off as far as what we can say. Um, I don't know why you could have the actual new, as Ms. Cholo mentioned, to like a blazeway or something, but. So, I, that's right.
Yeah.
I don't want to have to say no right now, but I think you're gonna have to try to take a moment to look at it, as Ms. Cholo mentioned, you know, we can, um, grant you a, uh, a continuation if that's what you want to try to do. So, if we vote a term and you refuse, you couldn't come back for at least a year.
Okay.
Two years, Mr. Chairman.
So, I'm just trying to show you what our dilemma is and then maybe you can come up with another alternative.
Okay, yeah, um, I'll, I'll have to see. I mean, we, we have thought about, we thought about the alternative of changing the existing garage into, into that, but then we kind of really don't have a way to get into the house other than in and out of the front door.
Yeah.
Because like the kitchen is, the kitchen is right off the existing garage now, and then the bathroom, the half bathroom kind of bumps into that. It actually, the existing garage now is only about, I don't know, maybe just, just around, just under 400 square feet, so it's also very small. Um, it's good for like, I have one muscle car that I keep in there and then my wife has a Jeep that's very short, so we're able to get that in on the shorter side. Um, so, I'm, 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 yeah, I'm, I'm out of ideas at this point.
Right, and again, for us, we just don't have that on our bylaw that was never approved, um, or even probably thought of back in the day when these were written, and we really had to go by that, but that's what we can do. Um, again, I think the great recommendation would be to request a continuation, go back to the drawing board so you don't have to resubmit, and you don't lose your application, um, fees, and then try to come back again, um, with some of our ideas.
Okay.
All right, so.
Yeah, I, I guess we'll have to do that then.
If you could just formally request a continuance from the board, can we do that, Caleb? I know I'm pushing my mic a little bit, but.
Yep, the applicant can request a continuance and I can send the form out to him tomorrow.
Okay. Did you catch that, Mr. Campbell?
I, I did, yes.
Okay, so I need you to formally request a continuation.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to request a continuation, please.
Okay, so, so the members of the board, I have a continuation from the applicant, or he can revisit his potential planning stage and then come before, before another meeting. Um, so, again, as the rule of the call, um, Mr. Maron, I'm sorry, let me, do we have a vote to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll, I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Mr. Cussie, for the public hearing?
Close.
Ms. Roach, for the public hearing?
Close.
And I vote for the public hearing to be closed, okay. So, do the applicant formally request a continuation, um, I would restrict that we do not vote on it given the current circumstances. Um, it would be really reasonable to say, at least, um, if we're without boundary restriction on it, but be careful. Do I have a motion on the floor to reject the applicant's request of keeping, Mr. Maron?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make the motion as stated.
Thank you. Live is second.
Roger, second.
Okay, Ms. Cholo seconded. Ms. Roach?
Approved.
Okay, Mr. Cussie?
Approved.
And I also vote to approve. So, um, Mr. Campbell, um, the Department of Special Services will get to the continuation request area at the middle. Are you gonna throw that out and return it? Uh, and that feels, thank you for being.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Good luck, take care.
All right, you too, thank you.
All right, we're gonna give him a second to have the people close off.
Mr. Tatro?
I see that Mr. Campbell has left the meeting. Okay, um.
Mr. Tatro, Cholo here?
Yes, sir.
In the interest of full disclosure, I will be recusing myself from the 520 hearing, applicant, Robert Harren.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cholo. Mr. Jones, we'll be moving you forward to a full voting number. Are you aware, Mr. Jones, and you accept that responsibility? You still with us?
Yes.
Okay, so you are a full voting member for this hearing, are you aware?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, so we have the final applicant for this evening, a 5:20 PM applicant, Mr. Robert Harren, requesting a special permit on the section 32210 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an accessory apartment on property located at 8 Bancroft Street, Auburn, Mass., map 25, parcel 87. Before I open the hearing, I just have a question that we're gonna raise, and just to be aware, um, regarding this application, if it is in fact a special permit for an accessory use or if it's really just addition. So, anyway, do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Well, I have a second.
Mr. Jones seconded.
Mr. Jones seconded. Ms. Roach?
Motion to open, approved.
Mr. Cussie?
Yeah, open.
And I vote to open, okay. Um, is the applicant, Mr. Harren, on the line?
Yes, I am.
All right, Mr. Harren, if you could just explain what you have going on this evening and what you would to accomplish, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna turn it over to John Reel, who is my general contractor.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening, John Reel from JR Associates. Um, what we're looking to do here is to put on an addition to the existing house on the left-hand side of the existing house. Uh, the addition would be 34 by 28. Uh, it's well within all of the required setbacks. Uh, the addition would consist of a master suite, which would be a bedroom, two closets, a bathroom, and a family room added onto the existing house.
Okay, um, so you're not adding any type of kitchen or laundry room or anything like that?
That is correct. There is no kitchen, no laundry room. They currently just have a very small living room, so a large portion of that room is going to be the new family room.
Okay.
And that's it.
Sure, okay. Um, Vice Chair, Mr. Maron, do you have any questions to the app- oh, I'm sorry, apologize. Do you have any butters present for this hearing?
Yes, this is Steven Vincent, 9 Bancroft Street.
Yes, sir. Do you have any questions or concerns you'd like to, to, uh, submit to consideration of the board?
No questions, no concerns. Uh, just wanted to say I'm fully supportive of Mr. Harren's plan.
Great, thank you, sir. And could you please just again clearly state your name and address for the record?
Yes, it's Steven Vincent, 9 Bancroft Street.
Great, thank you very much, sir. Do you have anything else further to add?
No, I don't. I wish him good luck.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you.
Um, do I have any other butters present? All right, hearing none, seeing none. Um, I'm gonna open it up to Mr. Maron. Vice Chair, do you have any questions to the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I do have a, a question for the applicant, but before I get there, if, if, uh, the board would indulge me, I'd just like to cover some ground very briefly. Um, you started into this topic on whether or not this applicant, um, gets, you know, uh, from, from an apartment, accessory apartment perspective or, um, and as stated, I think this gentleman has stated this, uh, this is viewed as an addition. So, um, in viewing, um, specifically the bylaw in 32210 of an accessory apartment, and so again, the board, I think this will be helpful for us to be mindful of what the bylaw specifically states. So, a separate, uh, housekeeping unit complete with its own sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facility. I'm gonna borrow up with the last part of that bylaw because I think that's the most important statement. But as the applicant has submitted, what I see here, and I would ask the applicant just to affirm for the record, the intent here is to construct, to essentially construct for one bedroom, one bathroom, uh, and a family room. And so, uh, for the applicant, um, just affirming that there are no cooking facilities planned in this space.
That's correct.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, I, I may, um, leave it for the other board members to comment, but from my view, um, I think that the way the bylaw reads, um, it is, uh, it is contiguous that, that all of the elements need to be satisfied, sleeping, cooking, and sanitary, um, for an accessory apartment under this bylaw. And so, um, with that in mind, my view would be that, um, this is an addition, um, and does not fit under the bylaw specifically because there are no cooking facilities planned. And with that, I'll, um, refer it to my other board members for their comments.
Right, I agree. So, I was just gonna go around to the board and then we'll, we'll wrap up with Caleb, um, for his comments on this. Um, so, um, Ms. Roach, do you have any questions, concerns, or comments to add?
No, I'd like to hear from the building commissioner's opinion, though.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cussie?
Yeah, I just, my feeling is he doesn't have to be in, in front of the board. Um, this is an addition, not an apartment.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But I would like to hear from Caleb also.
I agree. Okay, so, Mr. Jones, before we move forward to, uh, the building commissioner, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns?
Uh, same question, uh, would like to hear from Mr. Rudy.
Okay. Sir, um, Caleb, could you, uh, enlighten us on your opinion of this?
So, my opinion is that this is in fact an accessory apartment. I spoke to the applicant. The applicant told me that this is for elderly parents, um, that it's completely closed off from the rest of the house. There's a single three-foot door that can be closed and, and it meets the definition. There may not be kitchen facilities or laundry facilities on the plan, but it could very easily be converted to a, a separate dwelling unit. If there was a cased opening where it was part of the existing dwelling, then I wouldn't have an issue with it, but when someone tells me that it's for their elderly parents to live in and it's completely shut off from the rest of the house, that to me is an accessory apartment.
Okay, so I'm gonna go around again, um, we've heard the comments of the building commissioner, Mr. Maron, your thoughts?
Well, I, I would, um, so first I would, I would put out that I, I think we all share a great deal of respect, um, for Caleb and his skills and his expertise, um, but I respectfully disagree. I think that I, I would, I would, I would need to understand why we're, we're essentially, you know, presupposing what could happen in the future, um, in this space. Um, I, I absolutely appreciate the, the notion that if there's one door that can be closed and it can be closed off, but for me, the bylaw's eight-footed states, um, the kitchen, um, and cooking facilities are a necessary component, um, for it to be categorized as an accessory apartment, and so I would respectfully disagree.
Okay, um, Mr. Cussie, your thoughts?
I would want it, uh, to be satisfied even with the building inspector. I mean, what needs to be done to correct it so that it can't eventually become an accessory apartment? You know what I mean? That, that would be my question.
Okay, Ms. Roach?
Um, I do have a few questions and, um, I just, sorry, I need to do some quick math. I'm just trying to get the square footage of what the addition is going to be. I'm sure everyone else is already thinking about it, your math is better than mine. Um, so is it 952 square feet? Is that what's being proposed for the addition?
That's correct.
Okay, did you hear that? The applicant said that is correct?
Yes.
952.
Correct, okay.
And you're adding a bedroom, a bathroom, a family room?
Correct.
Yeah, currently in the house right now, there are two small bedrooms that are on the second floor. There is a living room, which is very small. They do not have a family room on, in this house right now, and they only have two small bedrooms in the upper second floor.
Okay.
Any kitchen, uh, appliances or whatever that would be putting in here, you would have to require plumbing to be brought to that point and gas for, uh, or, uh, rain, and none of that is being done.
Yes, I have no further questions for now.
Okay, Mr. Jones? Hello, Mr. Jones?
Uh, I think, yeah, I lost track of my mute button there. Thank you. I do have, uh, at least one question. I'm not sure reading the diagram right. Um, it looks to me like, like, as far as doorways for the addition to go, there's just one on the right side between the, the dining room, is that correct? is that correct? Are there any exterior doors, addition?
There's one slider going out to the backyard from the, from the family room.
So, that's my last one. From the back. All right, that's my only question, and thank you.
Okay, so just for the record, we talked about, uh, Mr. Jones was curious about the, the means of egress, I believe, and the applicant stated that there was one slider going out to the rear of the property? Is that correct, Caleb? Because I was broken up on my end.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll be on it. So, I'll go from the top again, now that we've heard everyone again. Uh, one more time, Mr. Maron, your thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, so just a, a couple of follow-up comments, um, for the board to consider. So, if, if we were, um, to conclude that this met the accessory apartment bylaw, we would be asking this applicant, um, to either conform, meaning reduce, um, to the square footage, or offer them relief, um, in an approval process. Um, we'd also be asking them to consider, uh, designing another means of egress, which, looking at the design, I think that that would, just personal opinion, that would be backing them into, uh, a challenging corner to consider another means of egress. Um, the, um, the one point that, um, Caleb raised, um, that I bring, um, attention to is, is the one door to access to this addition. Um, I would assume that it could be, um, given that there's a closed door there, I mean, the door, door opening could be enlarged, um, in some fashion as a condition to satisfy, um, the concerns therein. Um, I'll just reiterate that I don't believe that this does fall under the accessory apartment bylaw, but, um, I, I also would be concerned that, I wouldn't have a concern of offering them relief on the square footage, but I would be concerned in pushing them to consider additional means of egress on this plan, and I, I don't know that that would be appropriate for us to do.
Okay, so I'm gonna, um, refer back to Caleb. Uh, you've heard the, the comments, concerns, the board member, um, all that, excuse the board members, um, is there something the applicant can do that could sort of alleviate the concerns of the town, so to speak?
I think if it looked more like an addition to the existing single-family home, and less like, uh, a box put on the end of the house with one door connecting the two. I mean, generally, when there's a family room added, it's part of, it's part of the existing single-family home. This is, this is a box added onto the end of the house, it's almost a thousand square feet, and there's one three-foot door connecting the two.
Okay, um, so, and I'm just trying to make sure I understand, so the applicant stated to you during the process that it was for elderly parents, but on the physical application itself, is that actually in the packet? Did they write that on the application as well? Can I have this letter from here? I wish to, uh, I wish the petition appeals to construct an addition on the existing single-family home located at eight Bancroft Street to be used as a bedroom suite consisting of one bedroom, one bathroom, two water closets, I believe that would be?
Walk-in closets.
Walk-in closets, ah, thank you, and a family room. Um...
If, uh, the board may, I'd like to have, uh, Mr. Herron's son speak for a minute on this.
I will entertain the, uh, the request to have the, the son speak, if you would like, please, go right ahead.
How you doing? Matthew Herron here. Um, this addition is to satisfy my growing family right now. I mean, I purchased this home in August twenty-eighteen from my father, and, uh, you know, I just, my daughter just turned one years old, and, uh, my family's growing, and I need to facilitate that, so that's what this addition is for.
Okay, um, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay. So, I'm just gonna make sure one more time, do we have any abutters present that would like to speak on behalf of the, uh, application? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Um, I, it does appear as though anybody else has anything to add, so I'm gonna ask if there's, uh, any further discussion on the merit of the application itself, regarding if it needs an application for a special permit, or if we wanna move forward with it. Mr. Maron, thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just another, um, without indulging too far into the hypothetical, um, just a, a comment that, that I'm thinking of. Look, if, if this were new construction, and obviously it's not, and this, this home was being designed, which is, which should have this space, um, then this would clearly be a non-issue, that the house would just be larger, and they would be adding these additional rooms and facilities. Um, and so, and, and so, there hasn't, you know, frankly, for me, there hasn't been anything stated that would sway me, um, from, from my earlier comments, that I, I don't believe that this is an accessory apartment, specifically because it has no intent, um, based on the applicant's admission, to have any cooking facilities.
Right, okay, um, Mr. Cuddy, any final thoughts?
I have none right now, thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Jones?
Uh, thank you, um, yeah, I, I have the same concern, uh, I mean, I have great respect for Mr. Moody, but I don't see a cooking area here, and it's, you know, it's an extensive addition, but it's lacking that cooking area, um, and certainly, I would hope that the applicant would come back if a cooking area were added to, to this addition.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, Ms. Roach, do you have anything you wanna add?
Um, no, nothing that I wanna add, although I'm, I share, uh, Mr. Moody's concern. I, I feel, I don't know that we can do much about it, but I, I would agree that it troubles me.
Okay, um, and again, I think we have to go by what we have in, in the bylaws on the application, as we have in the past, you know? Um, we can't, we can't speculate and use conjecture to determine what might happen in the future. Um, okay, so with that being said, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion, or request a motion, to close the public portion of the hearing. Do I have a, a motion to close the por, public portion of the hearing, excuse me?
Um, excuse me?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Uh, this is Rich Cuddy.
Yes.
Are we gonna vote on this as an accessory apartment?
Well, I was gonna close the public portion of the hearing, and then talk to the board to determine, so the applicant was gonna, you know, um, uh, removing sort of the, uh, the perimeter-type issues until the board can discuss it, without any, uh, interruption.
Okay, sounds good.
So, I'll be just closing the public portion of the hearing, that's it.
Okay.
Or I'll, I'll report the motion.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, Rich Cuddy.
Okay, Mr. Cuddy, you have a second, Mr. Jones?
Uh, yeah, this is for closing now, the hearing.
Mr. Jones has voted in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you, um, Ms. Roach?
Yes, I agree to close the public portion of the hearing.
Okay, so, um, with the public portion of the hearing closed, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, open up a discussion, uh, but we'll do one at a time, uh, Vice Chairman Maron.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to, to continue a discussion on this. I, I don't see this as an accessory apartment application, um, as it's stated before us. Um, I, I'll go on record, I, I absolutely respect the concerns of Caleb, um, I think that, as, as you stated, Mr. Chairman, we go on the merits of what's been presented and what's been stated as a, as a matter of method. The applicant states that there will be no cooking, cooking facilities. I think the bylaw has clear that that's a requirement of an accessory apartment, and so I don't see that, and I don't see, um, I, I'm not in favor of making the applicant worry about means of egress under these conditions.
Okay, um, Mr. Cuddy?
I agree, it just, uh, it seems to be an addition, not an apartment.
Okay.
That's the way I feel about it.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Uh, I agree with that, and, um, I, I did the math on the square footage, and it would exceed seven hundred square feet, so, um, if it were an accessory apartment, it would be problematic, but I don't see this one, so I don't see it as problematic.
Okay, Ms. Roach?
I would agree that, um, that square footage, yes, certainly. It probably was, if we're considering it in excess.
I'm sorry, you're coming in broken up.
Accessory apartment.
Hold on, um...
Megan, you're gonna have to repeat that, it didn't come through.
Yeah, you're coming in broken up.
Sorry. Can you see now?
No, we still broken up a little bit.
See?
Maybe if you turn off your video, you'll sit, you'll sit better with the bandwidth.
All right, so just for the record, what are you waiting for Ms. Roach to, to reconnect or dial her monitor phone?
Hello?
Hello?
Clear.
Hello?
Is that you, Megan?
Can you hear me?
No, I can hear you, yes.
Uh, I would agree that I think the square footage is too big for an accessory apartment.
Okay. And you're, do you have any, um, issues or concerns with the interpretation of the bylaw as the board, uh, is reading it?
Based on the fact that, um, we need to vote strictly on what is in front of us, I guess I would say that I agree it is not an accessory apartment.
Okay. Well, with that being said, if, if nobody would like, would like to add anything else, I'm sorry, um, if I could have, on the five-twenty, uh, application for Mr. Robert Herron, the eight Bancroft Street, um, what would you like to do with this matter, board members? Mr. Maron?
Mr. Chairman, if we could list some, um, some comments, um, from the Building Commissioner, from Caleb, so, um, what are the options for the applicant, um, and for the board tonight? Um, I think from, from board member comments, um, we lean toward this not being a, uh, an accessory apartment, and so, what are the options for the applicant at this point?
Um, through the chair, Caleb, do you wanna, um, speak, uh, from Mr. Maron's questions?
So, given the opinion of the board, you would wanna entertain a motion to overturn my decision denying the building permit? Stating that this...
So, we did not? Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, you know?
To entertain a motion to overturn the Building Commissioner's decision to deny the building permit for eight Bancroft Street.
All right, members, did you hear that?
Yeah.
Mr. Maron, did you hear that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I heard that.
Okay, Mr. Cuddy?
Yes, I did.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Okay, um, so with that being said, is there any further discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, one, one final point, um, and I, and I would, just for the record, I would be inclined to make such a motion, um, but in, in addition to that motion, it appears that the applicant, um, has submitted fees for this application, and I would like the board to consider returning the fees that the applicant had incurred to submit this application.
All right, so if, if the board should decide that, that's the direction we're gonna go, then that can be added as a, uh, requirement, I suppose? Um, so with that being said, do I have a motion for this particular hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would make a motion, um, to overturn the Building Commissioner's determination of this being an accessory apartment, and overturn the decision to deny a building permit for an addition. And I would ask, um, as a condition of that, that fees incurred for this application be returned to the applicant.
Uh, Pete Jones, second?
Uh, hold on one second, please. All right, so, we have Mr. Maron, as stated, um, submitting a motion to override, um, the Building Commissioner's decision about the accessory use apartment, um, and also refund any applicable fees, uh, to the applicant. So, with that being said, um, Ms. Jones, how do you vote?
I'm voting support.
Okay, uh, Ms. Roach?
I will vote in support.
Okay, um, Mr. Cuddy?
Approve.
And Mr. Maron, we already know your vote, uh, and I will vote to approve. So, with that being said, the special permit is, um, vacated, and the applicable will be refunded to the applicant.
Through the chair.
Yes, please.
Just a recommendation to request that the applicant withdraw without prejudice, the special permit application?
Absolutely, um, so, Mr. Herron, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so, and you understood what we were talking about, I'm assuming, the whole time?
Yes, I did, yes.
Okay, so, what we did was we vacated the need for the special permit, so what we're gonna do for you, just for a, um, formality, is for you to request a withdrawal of the special permit application from, before the board.
Okay, I request that from the board, please.
Okay, so the applicant has requested a, um, removal of the accessory permit application? Um, Mr. Maron, how do you vote on that?
No, I would, I would accept that request and, and grant.
Okay, Mr. Cuddy?
Grant.
Ms. Roach?
Grant.
Mr. Jones?
Grant.
And, and grant. Okay, so that ends, includes that five-twenty hearing, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Maron, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I have a second.
Rich Cuddy, I'll second.
Mr. Jones?
Support.
Ms. Roach?
Agree.
And I will also close the hearing. Good luck, Mr. Herron, uh, the, the Building Commissioner will be in touch, I'm sure, you'll probably have to resubmit some, uh, some applications for construction permits or whatever, but you should be good to go.
Thank you very much.
You wanna watch them? All right, we're gonna let them clear up for a minute. So, um, Caleb, just a question, so, as we have permits and whatnot in front of us here that, any signature is required, how do we handle that in the current circumstances? Have there been a formal direction on signatures?
So, the decisions will be prepared, um, app, and board members can either submit the electronic signatures to me, and we can attach them to the decisions, or the decisions will be placed at the Board of Selectmen's office in the Marion Building, and people can come in one at a time to sign them.
Okay, good, I'm such, I'm happy that it was established. So, do we have, um, according to the agenda, we have no new business, um, we have other new accounting things that you're aware of, Mr. Moody?
So, we do have one new application so far for the May twenty-first meeting, so we will be meeting in May.
Okay, so the next, okay, uh, meeting will be May twenty-first, twenty-twenty, uh, unless otherwise circumstances change, and we receive different sets of instructions.
Through the chair.
One can, yes, go ahead.
Maybe the board can just decide if they'd like to do the five P.M. start again, or they wanna do the seven P.M. We need to make that decision tonight.
Okay, so, um, for postings and different purposes, Mr. Maron, uh, do you prefer the five P.M.? Okay, so for postings and different purposes, Mr. Maron, do you prefer the 5:00 PM given the circumstances of the 7:00?
I would personally prefer the 7:00, but I can make the 5:00 work if it's the consensus of the board.
Okay, Mr. Cuzzi?
Same with me, 5:00 or 7:00 works, either way.
Okay, Mr. Chaco?
Fine, either way.
Okay, Ms. Roach?
I would prefer the 5:00 o'clock meeting.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Prefer 5:00, but available for 7:00.
Okay? And same for me, I can prefer 5:00 but available for 7:00, it's either way, really, it's fine. So I think really, Caleb, we could probably shoot for the 5:00, and then if any reasons need to be pushed back, we can do that also.
Understood, it looks like the majority is 5:00 PM, so we'll go with 5:00 PM.
Okay, you know, also, before I close, I know that the Board of Health and the Department of Inspecial Services have their hands full lately, along with all of our first responders, the police and fire department, all the nurses and different people in town, but I really want to kind of give a shout out to the Department of Special Services, the Board of Health, especially given the circumstances, you guys are doing a great job, I really appreciate all the efforts. I'm sure I speak on behalf of the board. Please be safe out there, and keep up the good work. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, before I make that motion to close, just a quick comment and a compliment to the way in which this meeting was conducted. I mean, these are certainly unusual times for us all, and pulling us together like this to conduct the business of the town. Just my compliments to Caleb and your team, and all of us coming together in such a way. We haven't done this before, at least this board hasn't done this before. I know the town hall is having to roll through meetings virtually like this, so just my compliments to the way this was conducted.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
And so with that, thank you, Caleb. So with that, I'll just make a motion to adjourn.
All right, do I have a second?
Rich Cuzzi, second.
Thank you, Mr. Chaco. Ms. Roach?
Adjourn, stay safe.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, I adjourn. So thank you very much, I think we just disconnected at this point, right, Caleb?
Yep.
All right, y'all stay safe out there, be careful, and we'll talk to you next month.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
All right, take care.
Bye-bye.